Call me around the confirmation order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to take a minute. I'll silence for the victims of the tragedy in Fontana. Approval of the minutes. Motion on second. All in favor, signal if I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Being non-motion carries. Approval of the bills. Motion is our second.
Second.
I have a couple of big ones in there, but I got motion. I can make motions on later if you want to do that.
Why an initial bill? Do we have paid that whole bill? Is this official?
I don't think we've paid the whole debt. And I know that Joel said that he has gone over budget, but that's his issue, not ours. So he didn't feel that he was going to kill us for that extra time and money that he's got into it. He said he had a contract and he's gonna try to stick with that contract, but still give us a product that could work for us within that budget that he agreed to. But this is still within that budget that we gotta do for Nashou.
Is this within contract? How much did I pay?
I think it's something seventy thousand.
Jeff, do you feel that it's been long?
Well, certainly would have liked to seen it done a little quicker, but you know, I think we've made some changes along the way and added a few things that were maybe unexpected. But I think we met with them, I think, oh gosh, I think we were on two weeks on Friday that we met with Joel and he was gonna, he was gonna have some, he got preliminary stuff done and then what we added on that meeting with him Friday. And then he was gonna have a meeting with planning and zoning committee. And then if they had any recommended changes or their plan that he had, if they didn't, then we could go ahead and have a public hearing on it and ask for public comments. And then once that's completed, then we're agreed with the commission. So it hasn't been a real speaking process, but I think it's moving along and hopefully it'll be done by the end of the year.
Just by the opposite, but it's gonna be beneficial for the commission to see if we're there.
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt, you know, and that's something I was waiting for Joel to add is he was gonna email copies of that in smaller sections so it could be easily, more easily emailed out and not such a huge file. And once, once that is completed, I thought we would get it all to the commission and the planning commission and members and let them take a look at it. But I do have my copy that he had given me that day.
No, that's okay.
But I suppose I could run copies of that, but I'm not sure that any of the changes that we made on that Friday that we met would be in there, so it would be a completed document.
On the subject, I know how we met with the state highway and it was talked about. Seeing what it looks like and if we really wanna use it like that.
Yeah, I think so.
We have a motion on the bills.
I think we did.
Motion in a second. Rule call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
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 Alright, motion carried. Approval of the national report.
I had a quick question, Kennedy. Strut B on page six says memorial building wage. Is that, I don't remember.
That's been over time.
Oh, overtime doing the cleanup and setting up and the things like that for the patch up.
Fishing tournament.
Okay. I'm going to approve of my actual report.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Rule call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Leipon.
Aye.
Pitt.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye, motion carried. Approval of the treasurer's checks. Who to approve?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Altogether, call please.
Pitt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Leipon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye, motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Who to approve? There's a motion in a second.
All second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signal if I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Being non-motion carries. Brings us to Stacy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We continue to stay busy. Hundred plus people again for the month of September. Nothing oddly unusual. Met recently last week with military first committee and have just basically out of Camp Rapham and chatted with the different agencies around as far as the guard happenings and issues toward veterans and nothing overly exciting there. And then just also remind October 16th through the 18th, I got the fall conference in Fargo. And this one will probably be a little more exciting based on the fact that the budget cuts that fell on the state veterans office and the loss of employees and they created a lot of tension. And we'll have to see how that plays out this, this fall conference. I'm making very frequent calls with Senator Hightamp's office regarding problems with the VA. Matthew Leipon's been great, great help. And we're meeting Thursday night with American Legion and Matthew's gonna be there too. We'll get the Legion's viewpoint on, on the problems they're seeing, so. Pushing a little, putting a little pressure on the VA when we can, so. We know they don't like it. We have, one of the remedies after the DAB meeting with Matthew and we have concerns with veterans not getting travel paid. It's supposed to be within a week after your visit, you get your travel paid. Well, we were having two and three month delays. And the commander of the DAB, which is not me anymore, made a comment or a call to Fargo and asked to speak to the supervisor of travel. And he just said, we will have Senator Hightamp's office be looking into this. And that gentleman said, no, no, don't involve the senator. Within a week, all of us had our travel paid and that one person had six that were in arrears paid up in two days. So just mentioning the senator's name scared the hell out of somebody. So it does, does help use the senator's office. We're gonna continue to do that. There are numerous still, still numerous problems with the VA. And we'll never get them all fixed, but we're working on them. That's all I got.
Questions for Stacy.
Thanks, Stacy.
Just one. Did the counties get familiar with what we're doing for a budget? Benson and Nelson.
Oh yeah, yeah. It was submitted, I remember Candy went in back in August or Benson and Nelson each got. And I think there was reflected there, it was very little increase to those counties. And they understood it, so.
It seemed to be all right, didn't it?
Yeah, I haven't, I have not had any other contact with them other than the one time from each county, so.
But you met with them?
Not, not, no, I just phone calls or the auditors. The auditors is who I've talked to.
Kristen.
Good morning. Few things. Time of the year for another quarter for our ANPG quarterly reports and reimbursement. I will be starting next week the risk management inspections for all the county buildings, including the courthouse and going out to all the shops. Conference was good. It went really well this year. I will be continuing on as president of that association through the next fiscal year. So through next September, actually, a little past the fiscal year. Our, our generator that we have all the time, it's been causing some problems not kicking in when it should. Or only, only doing a little part when there was power glitch. Cause the last time, last week, there was a power outage. The transformer went down somewhere in town or two, might have. And it didn't kick in like it was supposed to and on the generator. Generator kicked in, but there was a glitch or disconnect somewhere and it didn't come through to the courthouse. So we need to have someone come and look at it. Roger, I did get him a name and he called an individual to Grand Forks. And they gave us a rough, rough estimate of what it would cost to come here. But we also found out that Berksstrom Electric would check on it locally too, which we didn't know right away. We don't have an estimate from them. They said it's really hard to tell until they come out and look at it and see what's going on. So with your okay, I'd like to get someone in here to look at that to make sure that's working appropriately.
So.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signal if I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Being non-motion carries.
One thing Kristen did, he said that they tried it here a while back, I guess a month ago or something.
Yeah, we do.
Or they needed it and didn't.
Uh, last week, there was the power outage. It kicked in, but it didn't, there was a disconnect. It didn't kick on back at the courthouse where, like it was supposed to. We do test it every month during the summer and it had been working, but it's an old, it's an old machine too. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but something, something's going on with it, so. I don't know what, I'm not a champion guru by any means, but I just know we need to get someone in here to take a peek at it. And since I'm here, I know I'm kind of bumping this up in the schedule, but Steve and I did have that conference call with Bill Ockert for the ham radios that we had talked about last meeting. Steve is a little bit probably more well versed in it than I am, but it can be a doable situation with running a cord from my router, which wouldn't interfere with my line or Jeff's line. It would be essentially separate. Or as Steve put it, the ham radio operators would be outside of the fence where Jeff and I would still be in a secured system inside the fence, if that makes sense like that. Steve, do you have more you wanna? I mean, it would be a nominal fee just with Steve doing the hookup instead of having the telephone company come in and run a separate line, which would cost significantly more, so. Is that it?
Yeah.
I tried to say it as eloquently as I could, so.
So you don't foresee any security issues with respect to that?
No, it looks like this setup would be, were just.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve doing so? If so, so moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the amateur radio request. All in favor, signal if I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Being non-motion carries.
And I will contact Bill Ockert and let him know that that would be done within the next few weeks. Everything will be set up and ready to go and then they can test out their network and see how it all works.
Great.
Thank you.
Taking the lead on that.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you to Steve too. He's the one that's doing the work. So that's all I have unless anyone, oh, no, that's all I have. Just kidding. I found something else. It wasn't really that pertinent, so.
On that generator, that was working fine until this episode.
Correct.
I kinda, I was down the street when that happened. When it, it never really ever went dark until it went on off about six, eight times.
Yeah, I think Candy was here.
Not totally dark though.
I was here. She was waiting for it to kick back here, you know, essentially so the power would come back on. Her computer would reboot this, that and the other, and it never happened.
See, I was brown up over here. I mean, the lights just, and then it died. Maybe that's what made it not click on.
Right, so, you know, but during that power outage, Public Health never said that their fridge or freezer went out with your vaccine, so it's part of it worked, you know, and part of it didn't. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the disconnect was, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, get it checked.
Okay.
Will, is, does that control the whole building or is it just the basement and Public Health's refrigerator?
It's supposed to just be those, but when it, when something was wired in back when ever it was installed or put in or maintained or whatnot, more of the courthouse got connected to it. So I think it, it draws bigger than it was meant to, if that makes sense? You know, cause it connects State's Attorney's Office. It'll do it down here on the first floor. It'll, I don't know if we need a bigger, I don't even know what we're.
And maybe that's something that whoever, whatever the contractor comes in and takes a look at it can, can let us know.
Definitely.
Originally it was for the, for the fallout shelter in the basement. And then years later, it was Public Health when they had the vaccines and all the stuff that they needed to keep cool.
And that's when other things that they got wired in on it. Cause I know, or excuse me, Carrie's office got hooked in on that too when Public Health got in on that. Originally it was just for, you know, the EOC and the fallout shelter area. But I don't think it's a bad idea to have the whole courthouse run off of the generator by any means.
If it's capable of handling.
Exactly, but we gotta see what its capabilities are.
But how old is this generator?
Old.
It's.
Old.
But, but it's a, you know, it's a diesel engine that has variable wallopers on it.
It does.
Well, sure. I mean, I'm sure it's in fine condition so long as it was maintained, but.
So.
And Roger, you know, when I say Roger and I, I primarily mean Roger. Does the tests every month? We just kind of remind each other to make sure it gets done, but you know, we're not that equipped to, you know, keep up any other maintenance other than generally, you know, make sure the diesel's there and if you test it then essentially that's it, so.
It's never been set up on like a yearly check basis by an electric company? I think that's one thing we should ask.
That would be a very good idea.
Makes sense. Whether it's probably electrical as well as, you know, Corum, Butler Cat or somebody like that will come in and just check the engine and move over, just like, you know, ideally.
Exactly.
Kind of check up and actually basically make sure we got everything running right on it, so make sure it's gonna work right.
Yeah.
And I think it would also be good to know whether or not it can handle the maximum load.
Yes.
If, if everything that's connected to it can actually be powered off of it. Because I can see power cycling being an issue if, if it couldn't, so.
And if it can't, I mean, when I find out more of those details, I'll bring it back to either at the next meeting or the first one in November and see where we kind of go from there, where we stand.
Sure.
That sounds okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bill Otis.
Morning. I've got some dates for you too. Week of October 24th is our annual fall conference in Fargo. So Brandon and I will be down for that. Starts Tuesday and we come home Friday afternoon. January 9th and 10th is our annual Lake Region Roundup. If you have anything that you're interested topics for that. One of the things we're gonna try and include this year that we have not is farm safety, which is a very good idea. I'm not sure why we haven't done that. If you haven't traveled number three lately, that new fix up at Roarville was a great addition to County Road. The first time over after it'd been fixed, I was unaware that it had been fixed, so I slowed way down. I was like, wow, this is nice. Am I right here, Mr. Leipon?
Yeah, it's just a little bit better.
Very nice. We had our annual four pancake breakfast.
Thank you, Kevin.
That was a struggle.
It's pretty good, isn't it, Kevin? Yes. Our annual four pancake breakfast, we left Sunday with great success and harvest is moving on, but we need some sun. Sun would be good. Fair enough, but we used to pray for rain in July and August and now we kind of pray for it to quit. Give us some sun.
Phil, what was the dates on the roundup?
Ninth and 10th. Two good ones, David. Okay. Anything, questions? Crops are actually a little better than we anticipated. That's a pleasant surprise and with our commodity prices like they are, more bushels helps create that cash flow for our producers.
It seems like most farmers I've talked to have had higher than average yields this year.
Yep, and very much not anticipated before harvest. So that was really a pleasant surprise. And we're still working, Commissioner Brown with the egg department on this hay travel. Especially out of those coming out of the states from the south, it's got these bad problems, even though we got our own problems. You know, like resistant kosher lamb's quarter and some of that. We're not making a lot of progress obviously because our state is still hay moving and to be expected. Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brings Kevin up.
Project updates. First one, I'm grappling on the Ramsey County Cavalier County line. He's got a mile and a half left to do of the 12 miles. So he should get that done well, probably not today, but tomorrow I'll have that done. He did give me an invoice for the work that he's completed so far. I don't know if we want to pay that, but it's ninety-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. I won't be at the next meeting, so I don't know if we don't pay this now, it'll be a month before you pay.
What is, what is that versus the total project cost?
Uh, the estimate was a hundred and thirteen.
Okay, so we're probably gonna get another twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably a little less than that, cause.
The news?
Uh, close construction. So the invoice for, this is the close construction for ninety-three thousand nine sixty.
Who to approve?
Yeah, all same.
There's a motion in a second. Rule call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Pitt.
Aye.
Leipon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye, motion carried.
And if you remember on that one, we usually shared with Cavalier County, but we agreed to do our side and they're gonna do their side, so this is the first year that we're paying for it. Just for the freshener. The Roarville Ramsey County crossing is complete. Didn't go a hundred percent smooth, but the project turned out nice in the end. And I haven't seen a bill on that yet. We have to pay for 10% of the project. But we did do some extra paving on the approaches onto that rail. And I got a bill for that for nine thousand dollars. It's a little bit more than what Strad were charging us. It was a right rock paving that was working for the railroad. And I just had them do it while they were there. Could have done, have it done. So I guess I'd like a motion to pay right rock paving for that extra asphalt for nine thousand dollars.
So, second. There's a motion in a second. Rule call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Pitt.
Aye.
Leipon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye, motion carried.
Kevin, the problems that we had with emergency services not being notified on that. Do you feel that those problems, issues have been corrected?
We'll see the next time we work with them. I'm, I'm not gonna rely on them to do it. Next, that's what happened is I talked to the railroad and they were gonna notify the people. Well, they didn't do it, so I just assumed they were doing it and it never got done, so.
And this was contracted, white rock?
Uh, no, what was it? Right rock did the paving?
Paving.
Went the railroad, closed the road.
Railroad itself that did the work.
Yep, yep.
Who was the contact person there?
Oh, I got an email. I can't remember his name. Yeah, who knows? He probably sitting in Denver or somewhere.
When, when townships are doing the dairy pairs or do they notify you that they're gonna close the road for a period of time or anything like that?
Some do, some don't. I would say most of them don't.
Okay. I know both rural fire and Lake Region Hamleys called me about not being notified that the road is closed. Yeah. And with, you know, second matters with the, you know, emergency responders, they need to be notified when those things are happening, whether it's a, a short temporary closure or a one longer like that one. You know, so they're not backtracking and risking people's lives to.
Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, when you close a road for flooding, that was just standard practice, but. You know, we made the agreement they were gonna do it, they're gonna do it, so.
So maybe that's something we can bring up with the township officers and, and at their annual meeting and, and make sure that they're aware when they do, whether it be installing a culvert or putting some ground down where the road's gonna be closed temporarily, that they need to notify you or, or law enforcement center so it gets facilitated down, because you don't wanna.
Yeah, I just normally just notify dispatch and then they just.
Right.
Got like a one call or whatever they call it, that they call everybody on. But it never got done.
When the railroad was closing a crossing out here, were they notifying the emergency services on BN out here? I mean, was it down?
They certainly weren't notifying the, the property managers, cause that was a mess.
They weren't very good. I heard about it, but I mean, it wasn't out there, but.
I heard good about it, no.
Railroad wasn't notifying emergency either?
I don't think so.
They were doing every crossing.
Yeah, they did, they did every crossing and some of them were down for all day, you know, and then some. You know, I know that one mile east of me was down for a day and a half. Ours was down all day.
You heard reading all the way in your place?
No, well, you have that, that crappy prairie trail that goes east and, you know, after a rain like we had last week, that was, that was pretty rough, yep, so.
Oh, you can rectify this, I mean.
Well, I think we're just gonna have to do it ourselves. I mean, as far as the counties concerned, like the township, that's another issue, but like.
Like the name I know here?
Right.
Would they notify the county they're gonna do some projects?
They don't assign me on the Elk's Drive, but.
Not this other one?
I don't know where it'd be, no.
No.
I don't know if they notify the townships.
And I'm not sure what exactly they did, because when they did that grade raise from Church's Ferry East, they did, they started at our crossing, so I'm not sure why they had to redo our crossing again. And that was a year or two years ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they did it.
I'm not sure either. No, it certainly isn't.
Elk's Drive, the same situation.
Yeah, they, they pulled everything over on the tracks and then they.
Last one's a more covered.
I don't even know what they were doing either, to be honest. It wasn't that long ago they put that in.
So I think what we'll have to do is just do it ourselves. Same way with, they did take, they promised us or told us they were gonna take the detour signs down. Didn't do it.
Never did.
Out of Roarville?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, once the project was completed, they did take the ones right by the project down, but all the ones, the detour routes, they stayed up all weekend, so people thought they still had the detour. People thought they still had the detour. And they told us they would go push those in the ditch, knock them over, whatever, well, we had to go out there and do it ourselves.
Or somebody told somebody to do it and he didn't do it, yeah?
Probably, or god, whatever, I don't know what happened, but. Same thing, the railroad, we relied on the railroad to do that and it never got done. So, living on that.
Yeah, you know, with the. Communication, yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, Lake Region Heritage Center roof, uh, last time I talked to, uh, the roof company. They said they had their estimate already. They hadn't sent it to, uh, the Lake, the Heritage Center yet, but. They would assure me they'd get it there that day. But they also told me that they would not guarantee the work that they were gonna do, not to leak. What do they mean? They didn't know if their material was gonna adhere to what's up there now. So, but I still haven't seen this stuff. That was last week, middle of last week when they told me they were gonna email it to. Can't think where they.
Rachel.
Rachel.
No, she's gone. She's gone.
So it might be just sitting there.
What, officially, just last week?
Two weeks ago now.
Okay, that's probably happened. Right, oh, I'll check.
That's right.
Well, I think, I think Kelly's a survey president.
Check her emails.
Yeah, I think Kelly's been pretty well on top of it, so she probably does know. If I run into her, I'll ask her.
Yeah, she probably has the numbers she didn't.
Right, well, and then we've got, we've got our meeting this evening, so.
Probably talk about it then, yeah.
Right. Is that, is that standard practice? Not to, not to guarantee your work to not do what you did, you know, why you did it?
And looking at it myself, I was up there, I, you know, it's not like the water pours in up there. It, it sneaks up underneath the metal and then whatever it gets sneaks up there, that's what's leaking down onto the. It's not like when it rains, it pours in. The, the, the water comes down and goes off the copper roof onto this rubber roof. Well, the rubber roof, it gets tucked up underneath the, the metal, so whatever moisture sneaks up there, that's what's coming through. The, uh, roof to seal. So what they do is they take a glue, tar, whatever, and seal that seam so the water can't seep underneath there. Now they're thinking their glue will stick to everything.
Is there any other independence around, maybe DAPL?
I don't know. I don't give it a roof in much, but I don't really know. It doesn't look like that, that big of a job if you can find the right, uh, material.
Maybe talk to Lake Region Brooklyn or something, maybe Gosh. Jeff, Jeff, I might be able to look at it. Maybe they'd have some kind of a fix we could look at it, but.
Yeah, I would try that.
Wouldn't hurt to get a second opinion anyway, just to see what the cost difference would be or even if they could tackle it, I don't know.
I would certainly make my work in my, try somebody else, you know?
Was that Tecta that you talked to?
Tecta, that's who I talked to.
Judge, maybe I'll give you a referral to somewhere else too if you tend to.
Judge pretty good. You need my words at the front, I was happy.
Yeah, I think you said, if he looked at it, I think we should try that or.
Who?
Jeff Gosh.
Okay.
The Lake Region?
Lake Region, okay. They pretty much do all the, a lot of residential stuff.
Very independent.
Probably, like, like bridges, if they could at least look at it and.
News they can't yet, let them go.
Swanset, Swanset lost.
President of the.
Yeah, I know who she is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know what to do. I mean, I'll talk, I'll talk to this Gosh and see what he, his opinion is, but I don't know what else to do about it.
I think you'll address it. No doubt, I think.
Yeah, and I think even just ask him for an estimate and, and e- even if it's not within his scope of work. Uh, to find out what kind of a binding agent we need in order to seal that roof. You could at least know what we're talking about.
It's copper metal that comes down onto a rubber roof, so I suppose you gotta add a little material.
So it's gonna, it's gonna bind the copper and the rubber, which is. On the plus side, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a huge fix.
No, it isn't.
Expense wise, it's just some kind of a ceiling, which is good. That's, that's a real positive thing. It wins against them for really cheap.
Let's try that or this.
There is one, um, this got gutter, uh, uh, catch basins up there that the water goes down and then out through the. So they got these sewer pipes that come through the attic and then out, outside. Well, one of those cracked or something, so when the water comes through that drain system, that, that, that sewer system, gutter is leaking. So that's causing probably bigger problems.
That's why it's leaking more than anything.
Exactly.
You have the catch basin, national water on the roof, running out and crack.
And it looks like regular three inch sewer pipe, so.
Asbestos round?
Nope.
It's not it?
Mm-mm.
It's probably easy.
The Cobra, that's still scheduled to start on October ninth. I don't know if I mentioned that at the last meeting or not, but. Uh, they're gonna start patching the holes on the ninth and hope to be laying the first lift on the. Two days after that. They figure it's gonna take two days to patch the holes.
He's got that night for you?
Yes. Now, I'll be in Bismarck, that ninth and tenth, but Nick, Nick is very good at doing asphalt projects, so.
Please go up there and watch it.
Okay, and then for Ramsey County eight, so that project is finally complete. They got all their signs up, all done now, so. Uh, they have motion paid for that final payment to, you know, construction. And then most of the, the payment is for the retained junk and a performance bond for thirty thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. So.
Aye.
There's a motion in the second. Rule call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Pitt.
Aye.
Lai Pun.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Along with that, we have this letter that we reviewed the final project. It meets our acceptance, so. He has motion for the chairman to sign that.
So moved.
Aye.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor, signal, probably say aye.
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 And the quotes for our fifteen foot rotary cutters. Actually, I forgot to bring mine. But the, uh, looks like John or Butler was a little bid. Probably trading our old machine. Oh, thank you. And one of our new machines. And then buy two machines out or anything, trade one or two in, the final price will be. Thirty-one thousand seven thirty-four twelve for the little bit with Butler machinery. And that's for sholties.
You had what, fifty in the budget or something?
Seventy-five, yeah. Well, within our budget. I was figuring it'd be closer to fifty thousand, so.
You're gonna keep mine, you don't want it?
Yep, we are. We kind of have a spare, but we use it time around town. Sometimes the city borrow our spare.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, motion to buy those two little, little mowers.
Set. There's a motion in the second to approve the course for the rotary cutter. Rule call.
Are they pretty similar in width?
Yeah, same width, they're just a different brand. Actually, better mowers, uh, heavier steel, uh, better transfer gearboxes and. Pretty much everything else is the same, but.
Okay, Pitt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lai Pun.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye, motion carried.
Yeah, there's not much left.
The last thing I have is the, uh, meeting we had at the DOT about the safe access plan on US two. Uh, just kind of a formal discussion. You guys can step in here. I missed something, but. We just talked about some ideas of how to access those roads and. Where to have turning lanes, where not to have turning lanes and. One thing to keep in mind is, uh, they think it's gonna take at least a year to finish this study, so. Almost not something we're gonna, they're gonna just be. Done in two months left. Hey, can you guys want to?
No, I don't agree.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the discussion revolved around, uh, you know, median access points. And how could you maybe make the highway safer for those left-hand turns, getting on, getting off? Uh, they kind of thought they might come up with a few different plans. Uh, and then, uh, once they get the access plans done, then they can bring it in front of the public and. And a lot of the, the conversation actually revolved around, uh, you know, planning and zoning and. Trying to figure out, you know, where things are, at least an inkling of what's still commercial now and residential and where we think things are gonna, you know, obviously we don't have crystal ball, but, you know. Planning for the future down the highway as it goes east towards the rest area and, you know, sort of developing a plan so we're not gonna be stacking turnoffs on top of turnoffs and, and things like that, so. You gotta get a front end road, obviously, uh, if, if anything develops east of, uh, close down that way through where they're pulling dirt right now, all the way down to Wild Life. Uh, area, it's not that section line, you know, just kind of that discussion, you know, and, you know, and the, and the other one is, uh. Kind of where they put the new turn lane in the vieties and then close, it gets kind of stacked up there, so. Bet there are, keeping that same way, options for making it a little bit better, that kind of thing, so.
We thanked them for the left turning lanes and.
Yep.
We were very appreciative and, and wanted, make things a lot safer out there, but I love that, so. We were, we're very receptive to that, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, the townships were there too, stuff was good, because they had a lot of, they had put on.
Their new, uh, area guy, what, Reed, Wyatt Hanson, right?
Wyatt's the new director.
Anything new, uh, the gentleman that was there from Bismarck, Steve?
Yeah.
I like that, that's awesome. But he, uh, and there's diagrams at the state highway plan. On how they determine some of this stuff for maps and. Full table maps, so you know, look at them, they're there, so. Saltman Locken was there.
Yeah, and, and most of the main turns where there's left turns off now, where there's high traffic, comes to warrant a turn lane and have a turn lane. Now it's just a question of, we have those other ones that people are still using. To go left when they're, and they're not, they're not, there's no left turn lane there, but they don't warrant a turn lane, so. If you wanna make the traffic safer, the, you know, the options are, you just go with what you got now, or can you start closing some medians off, maybe? And then driving traffic to one left turn lane to make it safer, you know, especially in that Ackerman Acres area, you know? Cause there's, well, four entrances into that, I think, and all of them are used separately, but only one has a left enter, so.
Mike Craftstar was there and he was very informed of and had good questions and then. Saltman Locken seemed to want help.
Yeah.
You know, to try to.
Especially the zoning.
Determine what to do out there and places that, you know, I, I think like we talked about the zoning plan, it will benefit them a lot, I think, down the road. They wanted, have to look at it.
What's all I have? Kevin, uh, stream crossing standards.
Yeah.
And those two townships that made that request way back when. Um, do you recall, did we change a policy requiring the state to do a stream crossing standards for us or?
No.
W- w- why, do you know, remember why it was?
Was a water board. Water board was using them as a legal. They were worried about downstream effects. So that way they can get away from downstream effects. KLJ could do the same thing, but the water board does it for free. No problem, it takes a year.
Yeah.
For KLJ to take.
Month. Yes, and we've had KLJ do a street crossing for us in the last couple of years, I remember having it.
Yeah, they did the one on ten.
Yeah.
What townships?
Yeah.
Not Mark.
Uh, Cato isn't it?
I think they're both at Cato.
Yeah, you're talking the one that goes across eight and then goes across four then?
Well, it's the one with, uh, that John Martinson was in here and talked to us about it.
Oh, you're talking that one?
Yeah, um.
But we told them that one, they will fit in until at least next year, right?
Right, that's our budget for next year, huh?
Yep.
And, um, but you know, we, whether or not we want to make that a, a policy change to do that. You know, and here's the deal, is that the water commission, you know, they provide the basin with a basin engineer that can do it. Can do a stream crossing standards, but it does, in order for it to meet their regulatory and legal requirements to. Take the burden and the liability off the entity, when it does. Um, if there's downstream effects, they have to go through their regulatory agency within the state water commission in order to do that. And there's so backlog that it's taken, I don't know, six months, five months?
Close to a year.
It, it's been a long time, you know, so. You know, I sent, uh, the engineer a, a notice or an email back in, end of August, and he said that it was done. He was waiting for approval and signatures and then last week they had the same response. And so I fired off an email this morning and I got to talk to his bosses and, you know, hey. You know, we wanna work with you guys, but we've lost construction season, you know, um.
We weren't doing it this year, right?
No, but there, there was one that we were gonna do this year, wasn't there, up there?
No, those two that they're doing the stream crossings, we told them both that these things take a long time to get done, so.
Okay.
Both of them.
They didn't come in till like April or, it was April, I think.
Yeah, it was just the fourth place.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't fit it in the budget, but we might have been able to, would have been.
Well, I don't know if it, i- if it's our, our cost on it, is, isn't it the township that's doing it?
Uh, no, there are structures, there are.
Bridges.
Yeah.
And a culvert's over, what, thirty-six?
Any bridge.
Yeah, it's a bridge right now, right, it's really, I mean, it's a small.
One's a bridge, one's a box culvert?
It's a big street crossing, huge.
All right.
Any of them's gotta be taken care of, right, Kevin?
Uh, they're our responsibility.
And they want big culverts now, right?
Yep.
Well, whatever the street crossing calls it.
Right.
And we don't, we have.
Which, that's a yes.
Yeah, but we, we told them it would be. And then we turn over to the, this, we turn over to the water board for their recommendation. And then they, sometimes they either hire KLJ or hire to do the state engineering.
Yeah, it's kind of a, you know, it's almost their policy, you know, if they're comfortable with waiting whatever time it, I mean. It takes to get the street crossing standard up from the state, I guess we.
And that's what we go burn some, is that might be October before we see anything happen.
Other than, you know, if we say it's getting too long and it's screwing up our budgeting process, we can, we don't know for, we're gonna need for next year, then we can say, hey, can we use any way we can kind of get this thing moving a little quicker, but.
We've never put, we tried to figure out what it's on cost, right? We've never did anything.
Put it into the budget, I kind of had a.
You got an idea.
Right, I probably figured how I, yeah.
What's a stream crossing standard?
Oh, I don't know, but they.
Cost, or something like KLJ did on ten.
Well, they did ten, it was probably, so we only paid for a portion of that, so I'm gonna guess around five, six, seven, I don't know for sure, cause I don't.
For the total cost.
So. Seven thousand. I would have to ask, right?
And we don't do a lot of them every year.
No.
Probably three or four.
In fact, they do them, yeah.
That's what I mean, but I mean, if, if, if they decided to make the change to get them done quicker, to get the turnaround, I mean. It almost seems like it, it should be, it doesn't necessarily need to be a blanket policy, but, you know, does it need to be done now? Hire somebody and get it done, or if we've got time like we have on something like the one up at Edward, where we know we're not gonna do it until next year. Let the state handle it.
Yeah.
And that's why.
When we save five grand.
That's why we.
More than that. Yeah, it could be more than that.
Oh, yeah, that's why we decided to do Ramsey ten with KLJ, just to get the.
Yeah, cause we needed to get that done, cause with, with those culverts, something went wrong.
Something.
I can't remember what, but, but we needed to get it done this year, what it came down to.
That was the plan.
So we had to have KLJ come in and knock it out. Yeah, I think that's a good way to handle it.
Moving on to unfinished business, Cobra, Cobra Road Agreement. You all have a copy. Anyone far ready, Kevin?
Yep, I helped, or I worked with, uh, Kerry yesterday to wake that up, so. Looked good.
Blue, blue.
Set.
There's a motion in the second to approve the Cobra Road Agreement. All in favor, signal, if everybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Olson. Full same sign, then motion carried.
So, just a requirement, we wanna get the township to sign this? Also, we.
Yep. I would say we ship off to the townships and then when they sign it, if not, we'll figure it out.
They were kind of looking at this long, right along with us, right?
I don't know, I don't think they've seen that yet. No. This is our document so far.
Probably kind of think this is already, or?
I don't know, they haven't seen it, so.
Yeah. And work is to begin on the ninth?
No, this, this doesn't cover the ninth.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying that is, is work beginning on the code road on the ninth?
Definitely. But, we've already decided what we wanna do on the ninth, I mean, as far as who's paying for what? This is the future, so.
I, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have been nice if that was a little sooner.
Discussion on home rule.
Do we vote on the code road deal? Well, you know, we should see if the townships are okay with it first, I mean, what are we gonna do, I get it, but.
Well, I guess we, my thought, my thought is we were voted to approve the language to get into the township to have them sign. We're allowing Mark to sign it and then ship it off to them, basically, and then we'll see what they say, if they're okay with it, they'll sign it, send it back, and if not, they'll call on the others, we'll figure it out.
They'll be okay with it. That works.
Didn't you vote on it?
It's way better than what they had. Okay. Okay. All in favor of approving the home rule? All in favor of approving the code road agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, then motion carried. Now, moving on to discussion on home rule. You all have some applicants in front of you.
So we got how many applicants?
Four.
So, two, three from us, okay.
Three from us.
Yeah, because then the other ones would be two, basically.
Yep.
And then Rodney, then Suzie, and me.
Rodney and Paula.
And Anthony.
Anthony, that's right.
Suzie and who's the other?
So we do it at five, huh? We have five.
Who's the fifth one?
Uh, we've got Jeff Wall today. Rodney, Paula, Suzie, and then Anthony.
We had no deadline on this, did we?
Yeah, we got it.
Did we?
This would have been the last meeting.
Oh, I only got two minutes.
Yeah, right.
Today.
Today. Unless we, we should just, one day, and especially, yeah, right?
I don't remember getting any work.
They haven't seen it by now, and they're, they're interested, and they haven't seen it, and again, we're not figuring it out.
Yeah. Well, I guess, does anyone see any reason not to, out of the five that expressed interest?
I wasn't.
Rodney, it's not too late if you still wanna back up, once, but once we put you on here, take responsibility.
You do your job.
I think without him, though, I don't know if the committee could go forward.
No, I know, I'm kidding, we got it, Rodney.
Yeah.
Needs some institutional knowledge.
Okay, well, then I'd make the motion to add Rodney Brown, Suzie Kenner, Paula Vista, Anthony Herman, and Jeff Wall to the Ramsey County Home Rule Committee, thus filling out the nine members of the board. Second. The motion in second. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightton.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Motion carried. We probably need to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, since, since we don't have a chair, and we won't have one until the first meeting, so we'll just have to set a meeting there. Maybe we have emails ready, or, or numbers, or we can kind of have a preliminary date, make sure they would show up.
Most people probably concluded it on their application.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. We had, it's, we wanna get started, you know, soon, but.
What's the next deadline on that?
Uh, a, a year, I think.
We have to be, we'd have to have the work done by the committee by, I would assume, probably, what, sixty days previous to the election?
Something like that.
It's usually what it is to get, tack, you have a deadline to like, get any kind of a change put on the ballot. And we're not gonna be putting it on the June ballots, whatever the deadline is for the November ballot is, by the, is the time we have to. So the work done by the committee is gonna have to be done previous to that to come to the commission then. So we've probably got eight, nine months, like that.
Well, so do we wanna, do we wanna try to set a date today?
Try what?
In Monday, Monday, October sixteenth, for example?
Well, it works, did you follow up?
Monday, October sixteen?
We got one, Rodney. You two approvals?
No. What time of day are you guys looking at?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm mostly flexible, so I, I'll go with whatever anybody else wants, I just figured it's a good place to start, it's kind of eight.
Yeah.
Early as a team in the class.
Morning, yeah, mornings work best for, for both Suzie and I, so I don't have a schedule here, but, you know, like, eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning.
Eight, fine. Rodney, does that work for you?
It'll work.
Eight on October sixteenth?
But I guess I'm gonna make this a point, that if there's nine there, I want nine people there, because I've been on these boards before, and, and if we don't have a quorum, you're wasting my time and the others too. So, that's what I'm gonna look at. If I'm on this, I'm gonna be dedicated to do it, there'll be I'll have to have a really good reason not to be there.
And Mondays are covered for Carrie.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the state attorney's schedule is probably gonna be the hardest thing to work around. Because she's got court.
Yeah, Mondays are.
Monday mornings.
Yeah.
All work.
May- maybe, maybe we should talk to Carrie first and see what she has for a schedule, because we're gonna need her there. Definitely. Because there's gonna be a lot of legal questions right off the bat on process and everything like that, so let's see what Carrie's schedule looks like, and then we can kind of start it, we can group email it, and then we can talk to Rodney at what time, and we can get it knocked out that way, then probably.
Adam, do you wanna, you and I seniors who are on the board, we can work with, uh, the auditor, do, do we wanna set up a, an agenda for that meeting? I think that would make sense as well.
We can get it set pretty soon, and we can always change it when we get there.
Okay, so then I guess the first step will be to try to get everybody's contact information in a easily accessible place, and we'll get going from there. Review letter from court facilities and advisory. Discussion on human resources.
Yeah.
Uh, she came back with thirty-two. This is act thirty.
Basically, now it's months, it's about, it's not a full year, but.
I don't know if we can not do it till winter. I mean, it was in our budget, and, and within the range that we put in the, in the advertisement. You know, I hate to start from scratch.
Well, I'm not gonna hate over the last two dollars, I guess I.
Yeah, I, I'd make a motion to, you know, accept the counter offer at thirty-two dollars an hour and.
I would second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, aye. Motion carried.
And she said she'd be able to start as soon as October sixteen.
Next question, where are we gonna go over? Probably a lot more than she shows up, she's not.
I told her.
I would assume that side office in the other room. Worked.
She didn't really, um, make this far as a laptop or anything like that, she just said that, um, she would put her, um, work and things on a thumb drive to take with her to work in her form when she's not here.
Do we feel that, uh, that location, uh, offers a comfortable amount of discretion with respect to employees who may wanna come in and, and speak with a human resources officer?
I did ask her about that, and she said that she leaves it up to the employee.
Okay.
Where, if they don't feel comfortable, that she will, you know.
Need them wherever?
Need them wherever.
Okay, then I think that's fine, work around it, just wanna make sure that we're.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of additional office space in the building, so it's pretty much there to go.
Always that old superintendent of school, uh, office being utilized.
Um, it's part of Lisa's office, because she gave up the other part, um, to the abstract office.
You know, that one has an, an access from the hallway, where people wanna have to come through.
Where is that at?
Right in between the auditor and the treasurer's office. I said, oh, hold on, hold on.
I don't recall ever walking by that door.
Deb Schmidt used to be in that year's staff.
Tried this for a while. Yeah, so you could be at the coffee shop with the auditor.
She just said she'll leave it up to the operator.
Good deal, so.
Okay, review letter from court facilities. This is just for our information.
Do we need facility? So, the court facility, and we're granting.
Are the courts looking, giving something?
Well, you know, I know at one time that they were looking into, you know, and that was when Carrie was in the clerk's office, um, doing like a new metal detector. Because I guess the one that is there is nineteen sixty-ish. I know she was gonna, she was gonna take, Carrie was gonna take a look at this, too.
That's how we always handle the masses, the state's attorney works with the court system, there's, so they make, they do.
Okay. Moving on to new business, appointment, North Dakota State, third delegate. Adam, you want that again?
What's the date on?
January thirteenth.
November fifteenth already, huh? Do you read that? It's a Wednesday. I don't think I have anything other than a combine core.
Well, ours needs to be also combined.
Yeah, I don't think you do, so I don't know. Depends on the weather. I can try to make it work, yeah. It's an interesting meeting.
I bet you it is, yeah.
It's going how expensive it is to bring in musical actors.
Oh, I bet you it's not real. Then they got to.
Move to appoint Adam Lepone as our delegate. Second. Motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Full same sign, then motion carried. Set appraisal values in here and.
Um, the list, that is on, yes, there's, um, homework person that's paid. Or, is that wrong?
On the back page?
It's on the front page, towards the bottom, that's Douglas Olson.
Okay, to the page?
Yep. And then normally what we do is we wait, um, a couple days for mail to see if we notice, we through the mail. Otherwise, um, now going forward, county deeds will be issued. There's two pieces of property where people live that, um, at the next meeting will have to approve eviction notices.
And they still have time to pay after we approve this list until that.
But now they have to pay all three years.
Before you just, you got off the list, if you just paid the current year, correct? Or the back year, or the track year?
So now it's going to be paying it all in the bulk.
And there are winter ban?
We haven't heard from those two.
Those, three years of back.
Three years of back, and then it'd be an estimate from the third year.
That's new legislation?
That's always been.
But it's always been, if, if you're over those three years, then this, that's when this appears, then, so it's been done.
So there's one sheet, oh, David. Use the one you handed out.
Yep, yeah, we had several.
Yeah, we had several properties.
Several people came from Friday until, like, ten to five, I guess, too. Several, yeah. Had to do a lot more.
Well, my, my question is, is, like, the, we send letters, obviously, to all these people, and it states in the letter that they, to get up to date, they at least have to pay the, for this back year, and they know that if they don't, then they'll have to pay in full, that states that a lot.
They get certified letters, um, people who live within the county get certified by the chair. It's published in the paper. They get another reminder. And then, you know, and actually, it's October first that we gave them Monday until five o'clock, because the first was on Sunday. So, you know, now we're just gonna wait a couple days for mail. In case they send payment through mail.
And we have to approve this one?
Yep, and then you have to set the, um, the hearing date for the next meeting. So, seventeen?
So then functionally, I had to hear it, and then that's when we have to prove the approval of each notices, that's when they have to be able to.
You know, and then I have to let, um, like, in cities, you know, townships, you know, that these properties are in forecourt, I mean, you know, one step closer in foreclosure process.
And when do we turn around and sell them? What, what, when the?
Oh, third Tuesday in November. So, I mean, they actually have a month, you know, a month and a half yet to, you know.
Come up with them.
Right. They just still have to go through all of them.
So we need a motion to approve, uh, appraisal values and a hearing date. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Full. Then motion carried. Uh, we've come out to report on portfolios. We'll start with this today, I like to mix it up. Uh, well, I guess the, the biggest ongoing news that I'm aware of is, is that we're still looking for a library director. You know, we've extended the job offer multiple times, unfortunately, it hasn't worked out, we've had several interviews. Uh, we have a couple more candidates, uh, that we have applications from, but because we no longer have a director, we're going to essentially need to do the calls yourself, and the only time that we're really gonna be around is during the library board meetings, uh, so that the process might be a little bit slower. I'm hopeful that we'll find someone, we've reached out to, uh, all of the higher education institutions in the state, uh, especially those that have a master's of library science program, uh, looking for applications, so hopefully we find someone. Um, but if you know anyone who you feel would be strong. But if you know anyone who you feel would be a strong candidate, please encourage them to apply. Other than that, everything else has been pretty much business as usual, as far as I'm aware.
Thank you, Lucas.
Hey. Well, thirty days about yesterday out of the jail. And, uh, Bob Worleger was there again, he's the inspector. And he's been pretty well. Got the policies taken care of, there was, I don't know, thirty-five of them, I think, approximately. And they're pretty well in line. We got the, uh, medical staff on board, Dr. Downs, Patty Longus, Longes, excuse me. Have taken on the responsibility. And I would like to publicly thank those two individuals for taking us on. They have been very easy to work with and are doing a very excellent job of meeting the requirements of the medical thing that we need. It was probably the biggest thing that would backlog with the jail under they would take care of. Can't take care of those things about staff. Dr. Downs told me yesterday that she was giving up some of her other responsibilities to do this. And compensation hasn't been finalized, but I know she'll be taken care of. It was an all-day process and then started April morning, we met at about four o'clock or so on, went over what was found. I think, I know the biggest drawback that Bob had, or Inspector, was the condition, the overall condition of the building. And, uh, there's things that we're gonna need to take care of. And the medical area needs to be updated, cleaned, painted. There's more things than, than what we've done already, fix the roof, fix the windows so nobody can crawl out. He was pretty blunt on a lot of things that we need to do. But he could see in the last thirty days, there's been a great deal of effort into fixing the problems up there. At least get a start on it. And he was very compassionate as far as giving us more time to, uh, try to complete some of these tasks. He was very impressed. He's the type of guy that, well, I didn't know until yesterday that he ran at North Macanas for, I think, ten years. And, uh, he can never figure out why they keep using that prison because it's in such poor condition, other than the fact that it's terrible. And you probably all understand what's going on there, so. And another thing is they can't build new prisons. You know, Birdie County, they had a big carry old boat to build their new jail, but a lot of that was oil money and a lot of that was state oil money. They were passed that. But this is gonna be a work in progress, there's no doubt about it. I mean, it's, it went on a month, like I said, and we've met weekly as a committee. And I think that worked very well. It helped Rob with a lot of decisions making and what direction we should try to keep moving and try to get done. I think the problem that I see going down the road in the next year, two years, three, whatever, is the financing of the repairs of this facility. We fixed the roof with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and took it out of the general fund at the Lake Region Bonafortia Center. And, well, we can't do that at all anymore. We can't take that kind of money out of that fund because pretty soon it'd be totally in the red. So we need to come up with a plan on how we're gonna pay for some of the repairs that need to be done here. And the only thing that I can think of, I've been running through my head, is Ramsey County owns the building. And when I say Ramsey County, I'm talking to the city of Dallas Lake also. The other counties have no interest in this building. So Ramsey County is in charge of this building. And it's definitely to our best interest as Ramsey County residents to take care of this building. Because we couldn't pass a bond issue out there to add on to the high school. I don't believe this community will back a bond issue to build a new jail. And there's been that myth out there in the facility for quite a while that they could build a new jail. And I think that has kind of went away now. And we better take care of what we have because it is paid for and we better keep it up and repair what we need to repair and get, so it's serviceable to what the county needs. If the other counties want to, you know, be part of the action, well then, so be it. Keller County seems to be all back in now. They seem to be all right. Benson booked other where they're looking at Rugby. They did, I think, sign a contract with Rugby, but they haven't pulled out here. They haven't told me that. So. Going back to the meeting last night, we talked about, you know, the condition of the facility and everybody at the table was in the grants, it took years to get it to this point. And, uh, we need to address, like I said before, here today, the condition of the building, get it back to what we need to have it. A little paint, cleaning would help a lot, but it won't go all the way. There's some other things we need to address. I don't think they're big dollar items. We went through the boilers this year, we've been able to, uh, get them up to, you know, so they'll be fine. I, we've got a backup boiler and back there's three boilers, so. But I think we can. But I guess in a nutshell, what I'm trying to say is be prepared as Ramsey County to take it, to run through the financial problem here of fixing this building and keeping it in better shape. Bob left last night to go to Langdon to inspect their jail. They're gonna go through every jail in this state. And you've seen other news articles in the paper. And, uh, they're gonna get them under control. And that's all there's to it. We were the first one, I guess, or maybe mine I was first, or Grand Forks, I guess they're looking at all of them. The violations are pretty sticker over them, but. These will be back between thirty and sixty days again. And we have a list of things that we need to work on. I think we've agreed that we meet every two weeks out there as a committee. And keep working on that list. But the policies are in place and, uh, medical staffs on board. Very thankful to them, I just can't thank them enough. Like I said, I definitely want to thank them publicly that they do a great service to the community by stepping up and taking over the medical responsibilities all day. Any questions?
Who was it to take over the medical?
Dr. Downs and Patty Longes, the nurse, she's the RN. And they worked at the, uh, they did at the Good Sam, I think they're keeping some responsibilities there. But Dr. Downs, she told her that she was giving up the hospital. She's thinking about retirement, so. But she met with Bob yesterday and for probably an hour and a half. I wasn't in there on half, they met separately, but. But if you got any ideas on, I'm excited, questions, I would definitely welcome any ideas, so.
Ed, I may have been out of the room, uh, you may have already answered this, um, but of the original forty or so standard operating procedures that, uh, we were out of lines with, how many of those remain to be addressed?
None. We've, some of them aren't totally finished yet, some training needs to be finished up, which wasn't feasible to do in the thirty days, but all the training sessions and classes have been started, all the policies. And I think there was, I want to say thirty-five or thirty-three or something like that, of policies that we needed to get into the manual. And the prison handbook was finished and that's been handed out to, that looked fine to Bob. And, uh, yeah, he's been just a great help in walking us through this. I mean, he just, you know, it, it's a process, there's no doubt about it, there's a lot of things that need to be run up the speed. And he told me, when he first talked to me in September one, he said, Ed, I want to kick the counties out of liability, students. So. And that's the goal, I think, of the whole DOC.
Do we have any idea off the punch list on the building, um, I mean, obviously you have, we haven't had time to get any estimates, obviously, but.
We're working on that fence.
What, what kind of ballpark are we looking at long-term to get the facility working?
Well, I can't answer that figure-wise, I can tell you, we're working on the brick fence and that's sixteen thousand dollars, we just, to get the posts cemented in now instead of using asphalt and get it elastic, you know, it's gonna last a long time. But, uh, that's sixteen and then, uh, what we did on the rest of the fence, I suppose, I, I think twenty will cover that. Chuck Nelson's doing that work for the Bonafortia Center. So, uh, and then the next cleaning, the toilets are all old style, that should all be changed eventually, I'm not saying for the next month, but that's something that could be taken care of. Shower doors, some of that's gonna have to be fixed, you know, there's steel doors and they're rusted out and, and there's things like that that need to be done. There, there's just a lot of internal work that needs to be taken care of. And with the prison countdown, I think it's around fifty-five, I, I'm just guessing there, but I think that's about what I get. Uh, I think now there's room so they can move the prisoners over to this side and work on this side of the jail. And then when they get done with that, they're moving back. There's just a lot, a lot of things that need to be done. I, I, the list is quite long and it's maintenance, basically maintenance, things that have been put out for a long time and they need to be fixed. You know, maybe the last administration in the DOC, I guess evidently was fine with the way things work. This one isn't. You know, they're making people bring these jails up to code, you know, and, uh.
And careful for that.
One of the things Bob told me, you know, told the committee when we were in there was, you know, one thing about prisoners, they like to sue, you know? They get in there and they think their rights are being violated, you know, that's why you have a handbook and you give them the handbook and you gotta have that, you know, show it's right and legal. And they want, they want to sue. I think once the committee got to know them better, they're accepting that. And that was a big drawback right away, to get everybody to buy into doing this. Well, you had to either do it or close the door. So, and he said there's other jails that are having the same problem. You know, there's things they need to collect or correct. The new ones, they got, Birdie County, they walked out, they phoned, things wrong with that right away, like, well, what's wrong with them? Just their procedures, there are things they were doing, they were doing.
Ed, if we, if we were to lose Benson, how would that affect the operational burden on Ramsey County?
It would increase the cost of Ramsey County, but we have no choice but to supply a jail.
Either that or.
I'd rather get somebody else, but I don't think Ramsey County is interested in that at all. We need to have that facility and we need to run it for Ramsey County's needs. You know, I like to watch out for the other counties too, and I do, but we need to take care of what Ramsey County needs. And that building, like I said earlier, is paid for and we need to take care of it. And it's our responsibility. And like I said, I'm talking for the city of Dallas Lake too, I'm not just talking for Ramsey County.
Well, what's the ownership, ownership percentage of the split? Are we fifty-fifty on the building or are we?
Fifty-fifty on the building.
Well, so anything you want to do, we're gonna have to have the city step up to.
It would be nice, yeah, I'll go that far.
Very, very good view.
But we're still in century code as a county.
Yeah.
To supply the jail. We, the county needs to supply the jail, it's on our shoulders to supply that jail. Either out of contract to somebody that has an existing jail. And we're not interested in doing that. And that's, it's gonna cost some money.
Transportation costs would absolutely kill us if we had to put all of our, put all of our, all of our, uh, you know, court dates and everything are here, if we ran to Grand Forks or Rugby or wherever, we'd be running people on the road all the time all over the place, just to bring people back and forth would be impossible.
It was diff, it was difficult for me to give you much information, I apologize for the last meeting because we had to meet the next morning as a committee and we were trying to follow through with some things and, and until he came back and we got through the thirty days, you know, now we've got to handle on what we need to get done more.
I'm just trying to think how we budget for long-term expenses.
I agree with you.
We have.
We should have did back in June, we did something in preliminary budget for eighteen.
Well, and that's, and that's why I wanted to know.
Right.
Not implying that, you know, it would be better off with another plan, but I just feel it's important to have a sense for what kind of burden this is gonna be on our budget.
Well, I think we'll be all right for eighteen, but when we set a budget for nineteen, a preliminary budget, we're gonna have to better handle on what, what more costs are gonna happen.
And that, that's what I'm thinking about from the, I mean, I, I agree with you that trying to get a new jail passed through the block is pretty much, that's never gonna happen at this point in time. But with social, with the state buying social, buying out social services and that twenty mil savings we have, we could probably afford to maybe take a mil or two in the nineteen budget, the twenty budget, maybe just, but I think what we need to do, and we have time before we budget, obviously for nineteen, that committee, that this, this meeting needs to identify the steps and the cost and what it's gonna take long-term and go on a year for year and just say, this is what we're gonna tackle this year and this year and this year. If it takes us having to step up and throw in an extra hundred thousand a year, whatever it's gonna take to get the job done, I mean, we can't change it all overnight, but incrementally we have to, we don't have a choice.
I think us meeting weekly, I'll call Bob, that's who we dealt with, Worleger, but he, uh, I think he was very impressed, he knew we took it very serious to get this jail in shape so we could pass the thirty-day deal so we keep it open. And that went all right, but we need to work on the medical area and that's, it's not be a big costly, I, I, like, I think in my own head, I, we could take some money out of the general car Ramsey goes and I don't think it'd be a big draw on that at all. You know, to cover some of these expenses in that jail. Because like I said, Ramsey owns the jail and we need to take care of it. Benson, Talinger, they got their own cost, they got their own things, so. But for them to have to step up and put money into replacing shower curtains or doors I mean, and stuff like that, that, that's probably not their company, you know, maybe that's not their obligation, we should take care of it ourselves.
Well, and, I think it's, 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 addresses the need of starting the discussion now long-term about every time we have a problem, or, you know, we're, we're always relying on outside sources to bring people into the jail so we can hopefully balance the budget off of prisoners coming from elsewhere. And, and in the past, that's been something that we've been able to somewhat rely on. Well, it doesn't seem as though we have a steady flow, it's kind of ebb and back and forth and it makes, I mean, I think it starts, it's proven for us at this point to have the discussion about long-term, what do we want to see our jail be? You know, do we need a hundred and eight beds anymore?
No.
We can't guarantee that we're gonna fill a hundred and eight beds.
No.
I mean, locally, we continually fill about fifty-five to sixty, may, maybe, maybe we need. May, maybe, maybe we need to have a long-term plan, and I don't know, but just determine how we can reconfigure what we're doing. May, maybe we downsize the jail to sixty beds, and we recan, or seventy, or whatever, we reconfigure it so that we have more reentry center. So that we have the ability to transition people out in a better fashion, and then we take some of, I mean, it's not gonna be a savings, but it's, it kinda rolls into that whole idea of restorative justice and long-term costs and community support policy, and all of those things we're talking about. Let's take this time to look at it in a positive fashion and say, "What are we gonna need as a community going forward, and what's it gonna cost us to get there?"
The reentry.
And, and is it, is it viable for us to even get to that cost structure? I mean, I don't know if it is or not, but take the time to discuss it now before we start throwing a bunch of money in the facility, it is, I guess, you know.
The reentry center, basically, new, I mean, it is a two-old building, and yes, there's money in reentry, and that's where the state's leaning. There's more people to take care, I mean, and they're relatively, they pay pretty well, and they're relatively pretty easy to handle.
Well, and it's, it's a money structure thing, but too, I, I just think it's, long-term corrections is going more in that, let's put less people in jail, and let's put more people in a reentry structure where they can continue to work, where they can continue to transition back out, and then we can provide them services to hopefully they don't come back again.
Right.
You know, we have to kinda shift our focus that way, I think, if we're gonna try to, I mean, you know, it comes back to the discussion we had with Ron Robles here. We gotta be, we have to be leaders on this discussion, not just going, "What have we done?" We need to say, change that focus to, "How are we going to do things better in the future and change how we're doing things?"
Addressing it.
And it's a good time to have that discussion, since there's an, you know, shakeup in how we're doing things right now. Let's have the discussion and figure out what it's gonna cost us, and let's try to do a better job.
Mental issues, you know, we need to address all of the state. And I think it's, the legislators are starting to understand it, and they're starting to get it.
I think they're starting to get it, but I think part of the problem is that it's gonna cost money to do it. And, and they're looking at, going, "Where are we gonna find the money?" I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna fall on the counties. I think it's gonna fall on us to say, "We're gonna make the decision." Yeah, it is nine thirty.
Yep.
I just looked at my watch, girl, they call. Yeah, we better, we better make time for our hearing here.
Okay, at this time, nine thirty, for our final budget hearing. And Fox.
Uh, I asked a question, and we asked it of Stacy earlier. So the other counties were fine with putting in their budgets for three months of additional help? Or how, how was that going to be figured out? None. They want none. Okay.
They requested for, on that additional three months with...
Hire somebody early to train.
Yeah. They put in...
They want none of them?
They don't want anybody, they wanna hire somebody at the end of the year and just roll them start in January then.
That's the way they wanna do it?
The, the budget, the first budget that was presented is what they put into their preliminary budget. They didn't put in anything extra to help someone.
So we're not gonna have any money available to train unless we...
Unless we pay for it.
What, what did we put in our budget that would be additional cost over the top?
I put, is it the second budget figure?
So what, what was that though?
We did three, we did three, four.
So what, 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 what other than cost would be a second individual then?
Oh, well, that's to be determined, and how, I mean, he put it for...
So twenty thousand?
He put it for the whole year.
But we have that in the prelim budget.
Yep.
I mean, maybe it would be in our best interest to at least keep some of those dollars in the budget so we can hire a person and at least have them part-time trained here with him. If the other counties don't wanna incur costs, I can understand that to a point, but...
At least a while.
Yeah, at least a, a few months here where they could just do the time that Stacy's in the office here, just to get them up to speed.
He was bought sixty dollars last year, and he put in for eighty-two this year.
That was the, yeah.
He's got twenty thousand in our partial budget for that.
Yeah.
But that was assuming a full year with the other counties chipping in as well. If we're just, you know, think, you know, partial for three months, twenty thousand should cover that. We can bring somebody in at least on our dime if we want some, a smoother transition.
Well, I think, I think that that's of benefit to this community, even if...
Absolutely.
Even if Benson and Towner...
We've got a big share of that, so...
Did, did, in, in your discussion with them, was there any, any discussion on when the transition occurs and we hire somebody? Did they wanna say who's hired, or is it gonna be all our, our decision, or...
They, they suggested to have the commissioner from each county to be in on the interview process.
We can address that down after we're all...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we had that discussion. Okay. Yeah. Well, we've got it in a budget, so we can at least fix it or work on it, work with it from our end. So that's, well, we can ask for it this month, they got some action. Uh, let's see, what else do I have? Roof, we don't know, but it's on the, we'll be able to work that in over at the Heritage Center under the general if we wanna do something. Like that, well, we'll find some dollars somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the Heritage Center might go fit it, I'm not sure.
They haven't figured for that.
Uh, well, you said we don't have a figure on the roof yet, but...
Didn't we put something in there?
We didn't necessarily put an additional, any dollars in, but we have a general fund to save these dollars. We could, you know, if it's a small cost and the Heritage Center can't foot it, we could find a way to work around it, kinda like we did with the safe house.
Right.
But long-term, we, you know, Lucas, obviously, from the standpoint of the Heritage Center, knows we gotta figure out a long-term budget for them. Just operationally speaking.
Though, in a, you know, bittersweet sort of way, without a director, the budget is balanced, so... I'm not saying that that's a long-term solution, but at least a place...
The way you're telling me is don't hire anybody else.
Well, the place, the place, as it stands right now, it does not stand to go bankrupt without a director, but we definitely need one.
Can we find free one? I'm serious. Only if you're one of them. I'm serious, that might be a good job for me.
We can all take one job, we can all take a few hours a week, all of us, just go over there, we can help everybody.
Bring in the biggest coffee shop goer in town.
Maybe that's the idea, put a coffee shop in.
See, that's a good idea.
At the same time, there you go.
That'll work.
We need a...
Get people in the doors.
There you go.
People would come in and...
Come in, and we'll charge you both twelve bucks for it. The other question I had, just trying to help quickly, was where are we at on total mills this year versus last year?
A county mill is up three hundred and twenty dollars and thirteen cents from last year. And a rural mill is up eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Eighteen?
Eight hundred and seventy.
And last year, we were at, what, a total of a hundred and twelve mills or something like that? This year, we're at eighty-something.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember exactly.
Just a rough estimate of, you know, what's decided after today. It'd be on the outside.
Yeah, this is last year's, but this is for seventeen, then, this is for the prelim. With that, we were actually at a hundred and twenty last year, we were lower than that.
We were lower than that.
For some reason, a hundred and twelve is sticking out there.
A hundred and twelve this year?
No, last year.
No, it's last year.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause we're down on more than twenty mills this year than last year, correct?
It's like twenty-five point six two.
Yeah, my whole point is, is that we've, we haven't, in fact, spent any of the money that the state spent, gave us on social services by now, and we cut additional mills over the top while adding salary increases for everybody, a new deputy, getting a bridge done, and we even put out for, I think, we've done a pretty, a pretty solid job overall. Mostly because Candy was able to find us some savings, the buy.
Next year will be different.
Yeah, next year will be different, but, you know, I think we've done a fairly decent job this year. Yeah, plus we'll probably...
Ed, Candy, Ron, you have numbers, and comes to an eight-point-five percent D-dog in our budget.
So once you add in the school budget, you add in city or township, or wherever you're living at, I mean, you're not gonna see that full twelve percent that you've seen in the past.
We're getting close.
But we've done, we've done a pretty decent job. At least, we've done about as much as we can do from the county aspect to find those savings. We can't offer the other entities that aren't able to find those savings, 'cause they are where they're at, you know.
Just to confirm, are you right, the, the county's tax burden on, on each individual is down?
Eight and a half percent.
Eight and a half, okay.
We're in, we've done okay.
I listened on KFOR last weekend, their tax burden is down nine percent.
We're good?
Right on board. But their mills are worth five hundred and fifty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're bigger than ours. So that minus, those were worth, our important, those mills were worth like four hundred and seventy-five thousand or something, mill a hat, so...
Well, I'd like to...
No, we're talking dollars.
I'd like to thank our, uh, social service director, she came in now, and for all the help on that twenty-two oh six money. I'd like to thank our legislators, all the help they gave us, Representative Johnson, Representative Westman, Senator Elke. It's been a huge windfall for Ramsey County. And it can be very beneficial for every tax-bearing account, so... I'd like to thank them again, thank for all the work. Rhonda is on a, she informed me yesterday, she's on a governor's committee, correct? You want to tell us something?
The committee, well, the committee for twenty-two oh six to study permanent funding by the state, by the state for, um, social services. And I'm on the admin committee, so I was, um, pleased to do that, and I, I'm glad to do that. And I'm hopeful that we can get some permanent tax, um, relief for counties, and it's not just the two-year twenty-two, Senate Bill twenty-two oh six. So that's the goal.
Well, good, I appreciate all the work she does down there, it is Mark Florida County here. I know she does a good job, and people talk about her down there, in a good way, not bad.
Hey, Todd, you're working, you don't wanna...
Thank you, Rhonda, I appreciate everything you do for the county.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, I thank legislators publicly also for all the hard work they did on twenty-two oh six. Big windfall for the Ramsey County.
That was just how we held it out in the end, that we had, we had enough, uh, carryover that we were able to fund that gap. And everything, when it all went down, and they go, "Oh, this could be kinda interesting," but it actually worked out really, really well, so... Like I said, I, I think from our aspect, we've done just about as good as we can do to keep, keep the costs down, still take care of our employees, which was important. You know, took, took care of some one-time spending like that, and things like that. I'm pretty happy with what we ended up with, so... So we have to ask for more, or just we have an emotional...
I said, since it's a public hearing, do we have to ask from the public?
I have one other.
I'm only approved of two thousand and eighteen, but...
That's Sam's.
I have one other for safe. Do you want that to be part of your yearly budget?
Did we get something in there?
No, well, you paid, you paid them five thousand for this year, but it was after...
Yeah.
It was after the fact of everything, but do you want that?
We have five thousand in...
We moved, we said, yeah. We didn't, what, we wanted to move it, you mean?
Do you just want it to continue and be part of...
On going budgets. Do we wanna just, just baseline, put five thousand in for next year, and then subsequently for the...
I, I thought we already had done that.
Yeah.
We did five into the budget.
Yeah.
Now we got, then we did them five last month.
We did five, yeah.
But I think that last month, you'll be allowed to do again in the future, because you can't add nothing to this.
No, no. Well, as long as you don't go over that final figure.
Yeah.
You know, since Stacy, since Stacy's budget is on the higher side.
We can deal with it during the year.
You know?
But we, we, we've got five thousand budgeted for them, for next year. Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we should continue to address their needs on a case-by-case basis, you know? Um, but, but I think it's good that we allocated funds for them, help them operate.
That's a question.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in their situation, it's just a case of, I think we're gonna continue to see that locally on some of these things that rely on federal grants to run. We're gonna continue to see pressure on, um, organizations receiving federal grants to keep running, and they're gonna have to come to us to look for those, you know, buoy up the budgets. And I guess if they needed five thousand this year, the federal grants aren't gonna be there next year, probably. They're gonna be twelve thousand again, so...
That's the only difference.
Well, second to the motion?
There's a motion, a second to accept the two thousand and eighteen budget, budget? Rule call, please.
Brett?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Pyke?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Hi. I would also like to thank Candy for all her efforts that she put into this. I know she was here a lot of nights. All the department heads did a very, very good job reducing it. Thank you, everybody. And back to portfolios, are you done yet? That's now, okay.
Any question, did any other questions ask? Anybody had any questions for shop, or?
No, I've said as much as I can, probably more than I need.
I'll try to keep to one, must have been, this last month, like I said, it was kinda like, sometimes, you know, the committee was gonna do, or how they wanna go, but the committee really worked out well.
I guess, not a question as long as it's a question, but operationally, to, to make fixes necessary to keep the place going the way we're working right now. We got the money within that seventy-five bucks, and the eighteen budget, everything, and how we've got everything budgeted up, we'll be okay.
There's some reserve out there, so...
It was just a matter of having that long-term special...
But like I talked about, you know, maybe there's some of these fixes on that building, Ramsey County should just take care of it. You know, it is better in the building, you're not gonna know about that. I, I didn't think I would be out of bonus offering to the board members out there, but I haven't. But if, if this commission feels comfortable with that, I'm not gonna go throw big money at them, not at all. But I think this funny grant, and I thanks maybe, as I, you know, we might just wanna consider part of that name.
Well, the other question would be, you know, we talked with David Dunn after the social services meeting last weekend. They, they're in for their mill for this year, but they were talking about how they'd like to have that long-term discussion about the mill, uh, to the, for the buy-in. So I, I don't, you know, grandma wants to have, you know, like, a committee where just, that you can have to figure out exactly what the long-term structure is in it really well.
The thing we gotta do is get our arms around the financial, the long-term, I agree with you, you know. There's, you know, I just didn't probably have time this last month.
No.
Addressing like that, it'd probably be a while before we do get, so...
Like, we don't have enough other stuff to take care of.
Right, you know, and, uh...
That's okay, though.
I, you know, I consider that one mill that they buy in as a membership, but maybe if we're taking care of the cost of fixing the building, then we, okay, we'll be a membership fee. And we'll be a, we will call it, you know, a membership fee, if you wanna be in here and use the facility. Because the nine-one-one, no question, what scared Towne County out, the nine-one-one. They absolutely didn't wanna touch that. And you can imagine, the labor bill involved with nine-one-one and their county alone, if they tried to set it themselves. I mean...
Well, yeah, better if they contracted out to the, you know, they have the state, that's...
Maybe the state, but that's, that's, that's not working very well either.
Yeah, that, or if you wanted to go to another county, and you had another law enforcement center, it would still be a lot of cost.
Oh, let's see, I'll go over there, we're on tape. Probably to put your feelings on the table sometimes, and let's, other people deal with them, I guess, but I don't think we'd be unreasonable whatsoever.
I just have, you know, one, one quick thing to add to Ed, since I'm on the law enforcement board with Ed. We currently do not have a maintenance, and we've kinda kicked around the thought that maybe we could get two maintenance people and catch some of this stuff up instead of paying out, you know, contractors to paint, and, you know, get our maintenance guys to start taking care of some of these things, these plumbing issues, you know. If we can find the right guy, we can probably save some money on long-term costs. Like Ed pointed out, this, this, this didn't happen in the last year, this didn't happen in the last couple. This has happened over the last twenty years. There's, it's antique, I mean, some of the things that are in that jail, so we'll, we'll get them fixed. So, and you're done then, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay, switching gear for just one quick second, you all have an invoice for the law enforcement center. I was looking for a couple of these bills.
That's like seventy-three something.
Yeah. There's a motion and a second, on favor, roll call, please.
Brown?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Mike Hung?
Hi.
Here.
Hi.
Hi. We've moved in here.
So now we will move to Adam's portfolio.
Uh, let's see. Uh, I don't have to report, I think I've got people here to talk. It's for double leg, you got anything interesting to write?
I, yeah, I can run the home, a couple of things we got going on, um, just an update on biofiber, I, I think the city commission meeting last night, but I don't believe that they have met their October first deadline, which, um, I think is an okay thing, because at this point, if someone is struggling to pay rent, it really makes a person nervous considering in manufacturing, they don't make money for probably two to three years. So, um, we're not out anything, there are no incentives on the people or anything like that, if anything, to look at it, the city got someone to pay three months rent and utility bills for them. Um, feel bad for them, they were a nice group of people to work with, um, I think they're going to still trying to, try and do it, but maybe on a smaller scale to get it going, but, um. So, well, I, I, if everything went as I thought it did at city commission last night, we can actually move forward and start marketing that building publicly now. And there, I think there, there's going to be some interest in it, it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand square foot manufacturing plant, but there aren't a lot of those available in North Dakota anymore, since the oil boom, um, took, took out most of those. Uh, we put in a proposal yesterday for the state economic development conference for two thousand eighteen in June, um, hopeful to be able to get that here, it'd be about seventy-five people to come for two days. We would, um, basically showcase, that was like what we have to offer and looking at, I'd like to see some things, um, geared around camp graph and then showing the rest of the state what we have as, as a resource in our community, that's kind of a secret even to people who live here. Among various other different things as well, uh, be going to the Williston ED&amp;D conference here in about a week, weeks. And then, uh, we also are working on the, uh, developing UAS, the unmanned aircraft systems industrial park. At the airport, we have about seven hundred and fifty acres, that, um, a lot of it is needed just for airspace and things like that. But, uh, there's a lot of vacant land around that with that consideration. So, working with John Nord and also Terry Johnson at the city, and then we started to include my craft started with engineering, and then we have a pretty good layout and drawing, and actually I'd be looking at two parks. One would be for smaller, um, businesses, similar to like Devils Like Arrow that's already out there in close proximity to where that's at. Uh, there would be availability of about eight lots, eight to ten lots there, um, additionally, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll map, I guess. So, you know, that's the section here, um, and then this larger section would be for like future development, about five acres each, where they would come in actually in access from the old industrial park. Um, and they could be for a larger UAS industry development. So, um, with that, we kind of started this as I'm going to the UAS expo in Las Vegas the last week in October. So, um, we'll be getting some materials put together with this to show, showcase, I mean, we can talk all we want about some things, sometimes a visual that a person can walk away with and go back to their office and a week or two, month, three months down the line, they get to talk about, uh, an expansion and it might spread their memory. So, hopeful with that. Um, additionally, we submit an RFP to the state for someone that's looking for sixteen thousand square foot manufacturing location. We do those probably four or five times a year, they come into the state and the state gives them up to the developers that would possibly have the criteria that can be met. Renaissance Zone is getting a big push at this point, looking at, um, redoing our whole guideline proposal that we have, that including the maps. Right now, I think we only have twenty-four blocks that are slotted for Renaissance Zone. We can go up to thirty-four blocks, and if you want to look at it even further, there's some blocks that have, um, uh, nonprofit, uh, ownership of buildings on them, and those you can count as half blocks. So I think we can really start to dig into it and maximize our capacity here and expand it beyond what we currently have laid out. And also, we're looking at some blocks such as like Chevy that are fully used over the young Renaissance Zone, so taking them off of their, their block and giving their block to someone else. Uh, it's, it's supposed to be done every fifteen years, we're three years shy of that, but looking at expansion that Devils Like has undertaken in the last five to ten years, and additionally, looking at to focus on the downtown development. Um, I think it's proving beneficial to look at that a little bit early and, and get that rolling. With that, on November seventh, we're also having some department commerce people coming to speak on not only, um, Renaissance Zone, but looking at a little bit of the Main Street initiative coming out of the governor's office. Additionally, getting an update on the Chambers initiative from Jonathan Holt's group that has come in and done their, um, feasibility study on our downtown and giving a, uh, a, a talk as to what their findings are with that. We're intending to invite real estate agent, contractors, bankers, tax preparers and estate planners, along with city and county commission for Devils Like in Chamber. Uh, the, the group that's laid out there is really with a focus on when someone is going to be doing a project, who do they talk to? Well, they're going to call up a contractor, they're going to call their bank or and see about a loan, or they're going to purchase it through a real estate agent or what have you. So, trying to get to those people, make sure that they're educated on the project, or on Renaissance Zone, at least enough to get them steered towards the city, to get them the information and actually apply for it and utilize the program, because it's a very number utilized program. Um, even though I sat on this committee, we had two meetings over the last four years on it, uh, I did realize the full benefit. Uh, one more, you know, the state, it actually entails that if you lease a building, so for example, Lucky Mills leases from Lamont Properties. Before they sign their next contract, they could apply for Renaissance Zone and receive five years North Dakota income tax exemption, just for leasing it. The state looks at it, that it keeps someone in the downtown, instead of getting them to relocate somewhere else. So there's benefits also that we need to be, we need to be talking about and educating the public on so that people start utilizing. There's single-family housing that can be utilized for income tax and property tax exemption for five years, um, commercial development, new and remodel, you can receive five year tax exemption for income and property. So there's various different aspects to this that we really need to start utilizing this program. We are now on Facebook and LinkedIn with for Devils Like, and using that as our marketing, um, tactics, we're finding that print marketing just is not working anymore, people don't pick up magazines and, and unfortunately, it's very expensive. I mean, it, you can, I was able to get drone videos made for what, three publications would be in a magazine, or, you know, one, well, it'd be actually two, two publications. So I'm sure most of you saw my email on the visual videos that we had done, we did one on our old industrial park, one on our new industrial park, and then we also put a community one together, so. I guess that's what I have, if anybody has any questions for me.
No questions.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, the one thing I would make a note of too is like, um, you know, Renaissance Zone and things like that have been underutilized at Devils Like, uh, so it's good we're making a push on that, especially since the downtown push is happening right now. Uh, the other thing to note on that though is that, uh, I think the state changed the law this last session, where now any kind of tax abatement property-wise or anything like that, every different entity that receives property taxes from that entity is going to have to approve the abatement. So we're going to see a lot more abatement procedures in front of us at some point in time here, uh, so, that's something, something to note. Let's see, Rhonda, is there anything interesting on social services? We didn't have anything really too interesting last night, other than we, you know, our budgets approved and.
I would just add to the Main Street initiative with the governor's initiative, they're really focusing, I was pleased to see the, um, I believe his name is Robbie Hloff come to our county directors' meeting and asked us about the mains, you know, input on the Main Street initiative, and one of the things is that we suggested they look at is when we're bringing businesses into a community, we look at, do they pay a living wage? How does it benefit workers? Because a lot of times, some of these means, these initiatives for, um, building and contractors, they don't pay a living wage and we're paying, you know, people are qualifying for like heat, uh, food assistance and, and medical assistance. So, they're pretty conscious of that and, and with the mental health, and focusing on mental health for our whole community, that's part of their healthy, healthy Main Street initiative, so we're happy to be included in that, because I think it's an overlooked issue and Commissioner Britt and I have had a conversation about that recently too. So, I, I was, I'm impressed with that.
Were you able to make it down to the, or anybody from your staff to that recovery, reinvent it?
No.
Yeah, I wanted to go to, but I wasn't able to make it down.
We just couldn't make it work.
Would have been interesting to see that, it sounded like there's a lot of people there.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, most whatever. Uh, county housing authority, I wasn't able to go to last month because they actually had rescheduled the meeting and it was held during this meeting, so, I was here instead of there. Let's see, uh, Nelson Nelson called me last week and, and, uh, we're going to get a working group together, kind of somewhat to what the stepping up initiative, uh, group is working on, and it might be the same group in all honesty, but, uh, it's almost like a counter thing, but it's different, where you've got the stepping up concept, but at the same time, there's restorative justice dollars from the state out there. So, uh, this, the community has to have buy-in to then, essentially, I believe it's grant funding, it's going to be, Judge Rostopson is kind of taking a lead on it as well, and Nelson's been helping him with it. So, uh, they asked me if I would be interested in helping out, and so I said, yeah, I'd be more than happy to, to, uh, lend a voice and try to, try to get some, some grand dollars and maybe we can, it all ties in, we'll conduct a multiple that year, so. Uh, let's see, do you have anything else that's interesting? I don't think so, I think that was pretty much it.
And one more thing, I thought I should add at this, just an update on the daycare, um, they've changed their name to Sunnyside Childcare because there's another center in North Dakota with bright beginnings name already, um, when they moved from their house to commercial. Um, they're updating on numbers, says they have forty full-time kids, by January, they'll be at fifty-three full-time kids in that spot, so everything's going well and financially, it's working for them, so, that's huge.
Yeah. Maybe you kind of forgot, we're not rolling that. And, uh, the papers out there seem to do a pretty good job, and it's, it's, it's pretty, the only thing is, on the north side, it's got a little bit of a bump, but I don't have to be concerned with it, because you know what, it's a lot better to use the B, we'll deal with it as it comes, so.
Jeff? Yes, sir. Well, we heard from Bill, I talked to Carrie, she said, uh, you know, she continues to be busy in the state's attorney's office, people can't seem to stay out of trouble, so, job security, I guess, but, um, she's satisfied with her remodel on the staff and budgets and all that kind of good stuff, so, um, Steve, since he's here, I, you might as well talk about the sheriff's department and your new staff over there. Anything else you want to add?
We did hire a, uh, a replacement for Connie's position, she started yesterday, um, we had twenty applicants. Um, we interviewed, we set up interviews with four, uh, and, uh, one of them backed out at the last minute because her employer offered more money, so we actually interviewed three. Uh, the one we selected was, she's actually the office manager in the Nelson County Sheriff's Office in the planet here, so she had four plus years of experience in the sheriff's office already, so we made her the offer and, um, so we'll see. She came back today, so she must be okay.
We just said, did you wear her off?
I guess not, she said, she actually talked to her late last night, we were waiting for her reading, and she said that she actually enjoys the fact that we're busy, she's not having a lot of bounce, so she's looking forward to it at this point, so.
It's good you were able to get somebody with some experience.
Well, that was, you know, that was the only one that had, you know, so I mean, it was kind of an easy choice at that point, um, but anyway, so hopefully that'll be, and it appears she's safe or considerable on the time, so. Um, we should be, hopefully, it'll all work out, we'll be in good shape. Uh, just, if you want to know, the, I just got an email from the DOCR, and that's what I handed it, that's, I just found out about this like ten minutes ago, so I didn't have time to make copies for everybody, but. We've talked about this for the last couple of weeks, but it's now official on paper that the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation is no longer accepting inmates from any facilities, which means they'll have to be housed locally, which is going to drastically affect our costs as far as housing inmates. So, it, it was all a word of mouth until this point, when this email came out today, so, um, just letting you know that it's not a good thing.
What's it, are they full or something?
She says they're full, so.
Then we knew it was coming, it was just a.
And, and, and state law allows her to do this, I mean, they tried this several years ago, and, uh, you can have that, it's not quite, but, but, that's, that's kind of the official notice that they're going to start refusing. And they're gonna, we're still working on some avenues to, you know, how to address this, but as far as we know, until they, until they hit the walls of the state penitentiary, they are not, their responsibility, they're becoming the county responsibility for jail time, medical bills, everything becomes ours. And they could be housed here up to a, in, up to a year, and, uh, before we have to do anything, so.
I wish they would have brought this notice and, uh, actually, I wish they did the inspection out here ahead of our budget cycle.
Yeah.
I mean, it's difficult to put money in there, now with more prisoners now.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the dip out in general, um, I guess they should be reminded of that, you know, maybe we should remind our legislators of that, you know, they have these policy changes, but I got, they should, uh, put something in there.
The date signs, is it the date today or yesterday?
Second of October.
Today, so, she wrote, sent it today, so, I mean, that's.
Yeah, we knew the law was changing, we just don't have a clue.
See, the whole thing up was that they have, they have to, she has to prove that they're full.
Yeah.
Well, as of last Thursday, or Tuesday, Tuesday it was, we had our, we had a sheriff's meeting, and, and they were, they had thirty-some beds open. Well, I don't think there's people went there, you know, that was one of the questions, that's been raised by our service association, they're checking into that, if she has the ability to close it without being full. Because the century code says they must have full capacity before they refuse inmates, so, we're working on that. But it does, it does become a financial burden on us to, I mean, if, if the judge has sentenced somebody to two years in a state penitentiary, and now they're being housed here for a period of time, up to a booty. You know, we have to cross the bridge of, um, you know, local facility can only hold for one year. So, after that one year, like even the federal, in federal, they say, if the marshal was to bring them here and they're here for a year, when that year is up, they actually have to come and get them and take them to another jail for a day, and then bring them back, and then another year starts over. Because it's that, you know, state law requires that cannot help that one, so we aren't sure how that's going to handle, but even holding them here for up to a year is going to be an issue, so. Frustrating. And their, their whole, their whole push is that these people need to be not depend, they need to be out of the services, and I get that, and, and, and we all support that, a hundred and fifty percent, that yes, they probably don't, but we don't have the services available to get them. So, that's the alternative.
Forcing us to get them.
Yeah.
Well, but how can you force somebody to get something that doesn't exist anyway? You know, we aren't Fargo, we aren't Bismarck, we aren't Creighton, I feel, we don't have those facilities available to us in Devils Like.
Well, even the bigger towns don't have that.
And some of the bigger towns don't have that.
They've got way more people than us, and they have problems getting anybody that's ready services, the whole western part of the state is.
So they're kind of pushing this downhill and saying, well, guess what? So, anyway, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I know it's a board that I thought of more.
It seems like we get a lot of this figuring out for yourself.
Yeah. And the governor, and the governor and his wife, of course, you see, I'm sure you see her on the TV, you know, she's been pushing hard for the, uh, alternatives to sentencing for, for addicted people, and I, 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 I support that. I don't, I agree, they don't belong in jail.
As long as we have the services to.
As long as you have the services to provide to them, that you can get them to, but we don't have that yet.
We, they're, they're, with the push, there has to be dollar tax, you know.
Well, there has to be services attached, and then services.
Dollars, dollars by services.
Yeah.
Free entry, that's.
There is, part of it, yeah.
That's the future.
Yeah. Anyway, so that's, other than that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that enough?
That's enough.
I was hoping I got another meeting here, juvenile court, I thought I wanted to get that up here tomorrow, they moved it to tomorrow, I thought it was today. My, but my thing says today.
The other thing with the, uh, airport and chamber, uh. The other thing with the airport and Chamber, I think Rachel covered both those very nicely, the U A S at the airport, the Chamber with downtown initiative and other things that they're working on. Their annual conference, their annual meeting is, is it next Wednesday?
The eleventh.
The eleventh? Chambers.
Senator Audie Coleman is the speaker, the tourism director for the state.
Yeah. So, and I won't be able to attend, I'll be still in Bismarck, where I have a water meeting following after our association of counties meeting, so.
What time is that?
It's at eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, I think.
College?
Yes.
Yeah.
Usually in first, I mean, it probably starts about twelve.
Yeah, along with the changing of the president and things, Steve. And the presentation of the awards, the, yeah, so. Other than that, the joint water board, we are seeking major nominations for our annual water stewardship award. That is presented to a individual group or a project within the Devil's Lake Basin. And it's awarded at our water ceremony at our annual water conference in Bismarck on December seventh or eighth, I think it's a Thursday evening where the all-people events are done and the joint board pays for person's transportation, lodging, and take it to the banquet, so. Anybody has an idea for a project or a group or an individual, let me know and we'll get an nomination form filled out. And other than that, I think we're good.
That just leaves me and we heard from Kristen, we heard from Stacy, we heard from Candy, who once again, I want to thank for a very good budget. We heard about the Heritage Center, so the rest is pretty much quiet. And I have one announcement just for the people going to Bismarck. They like door prices, if anybody has the ability to bring door prices along, they take door prices from all, we all have peoples.
Can I just rub it through step in my house? Do I have a second toaster?
I think they got it, yeah, I'll, I'll bring it in.
Well, usually you have something that pertains to your tubey or something like that.
To a point, yeah.
Like maybe we could put a fishing package.
You could, you know, if you want to combine something, yeah.
Take a package of fish, huh? If it's too small, I like.
We do a, oh, there's a fundraising banquet at the water conference that goes towards two scholarships for the board, Jamison and Scholarship Fund. And Kyle from Woodland Resort has, he has graciously donated a ice fishing package for that. And I bet he probably considered doing something similar for the obvious option, yeah. You know, it's a, he has a two-night's lodging, I think, and a ice, ice house, an unguided ice house for two. And it's about four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollar value.
Huge. Do they have a, file an auction out there?
No, they, they just do door price.
You'd be really popular.
Oh, that was over.
Yeah, that would be one of the big ones. Yeah, they always put in that ticket raffle. You could put that in a ticket thing, if we could get something like that.
Other than that, are there any other announcements?
Who's all going next week, everybody?
Everybody but that one.
I'm hoping so.
I don't know.
You're going to come now? Might rain that day.
I don't know if we'll make it down for everybody.
See the lights in my eyes, but no.
Depends on how the weather goes here.
Sunshine, maybe not. I'm just like this, nine twenty on Tuesday.
We didn't want. I plan on coming for the whole thing, but.
I don't know. I spent my day at the jail.